God, thank you so much for this opportunity we had. We pray you bless me in the night, God. We pray that you just look over all of our council members, God, and give them courage and strength, God. Bless our chief, God. We were grateful to have her here with us tonight, God. Put sitting angels around her to protect her, God. Bless everyone that's assembled here, God. We pray to see your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mia Richard.
Mm-hmm.
Mia, come here, bring it. All the other tables, here. All of the stamps. All of the one and they date, there. Here's another form.
Public comments protecting open meetings at Texas Drummy Cove five five one zero seven. The city council did not discuss or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each member of the public who speaks must sign in before meeting. It's limited to three minutes. Item number six. Especially possible acting to approve amendments for regular city council meetings failed September eighteen twenty five.
If there's no discussions, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting that was held on September eighteen twenty five.
So, all the way through?
Hi.
Alright, so we have a presentation, Berkshire Drenish Funding Strategy, by Mr. Jack Bailey and Mr. Michael McColl. Thank you all.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council, City Secretary, City Attorney, and the State Guts. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jackie Bailey. I'm a policy advisor to the Berkshire Drenish District. We have a PAC. And the PAC's name is Friends of Berkshire Drenish Infrastructure. And I'm their spokesperson. So, um, thank you for your time. We really do appreciate it. Um, so, we have proposals that are on the November fourth agenda, November fourth, God. And we have propositions A, B, and C. This evening, we're going to discuss a little bit about the background very briefly, because we have a ton of things. Um, and first thing we'll start off with, explain a little bit about Berkshire Drenish District and what it is. So, established in nineteen sixty-one, Berkshire Drenish District covers over forty-nine thousand acres in southeast Waller County and up to seventy miles of Berkshire Drenish District's easement. Seventy miles of Berkshire Drenish District. Alright, so the responsibility is to maintain drainage channels and easements to do flood and rest in effect on property. As far as what we try to remove as well is Berkshire Drenish to retain and maintain and are very proactive with the use of drainage and protecting the property. And the reason why we say proactive measures is because a lot of the voters and residents that we speak to and other officials are very appreciative of the fact that BKBD is proactive instead of just being reactive. And functions, of course, include plumbing, constructing, maintaining, regulating drainage, improving, reviewing, adding, and entering. Uh, the crews, I'm sure you've seen in the community, are regularly inspecting and monitoring easements. And again, while improving drainage and maintaining capacity. And that's one of the main reasons we're here before you this evening is because I know you've noticed the amount of growth that is coming in this direction. And because of that, Berkshire Drenish District Council has been looking on a minimal of funding and resources um, for quite some time. And in order to continue to be proactive and especially to keep up with the kind of growth and progress that we see coming into the area, propositions A, B, and C on the ballot are the measures that are being proposed. And we're asking for the voters to vote for to help BKBD continue to keep up with these proactive measures. At this time, I'm now going to turn it over to the engineer. And he's going to talk a little bit about the current challenges that the BKBD team is facing. And then I'll finish up with the presentation. Michael?
Thank you, Jackie. And thank you, council members in the rest of the city of Berkshire, for having us today. It's a lovely pleasure, an opportunity to give to explain what BKBD is, what we do for the community, and how we've gone to this point and where we'd like to get to. So I'd like to go over that in a lot more detail for you guys. And Mayor, is it possible to talk from the screen?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, just wanted to change the screen to. Just also just to be around the actual presentation slides to kind of give more visual engagement for you guys to understand where I'm pointing to and just to point to the slides in more effective. So, yeah, so the district, so the district, Berkshire Drenish District, comprised of, as Jackie mentioned, about forty-nine thousand acres in southeast corner of Waller County. Uh, something that differentiates us, I guess, when you would say from, you know, some other city or other counties, we only focus on drainage measures. So, we're not dealing with like small ditches, roadside ditches, or storms or within your streets and neighborhoods. We're dealing with large channels, hard fight of water that convey the floodwaters that come through your area. Those are, we're in the last line of defense. We essentially move that water from your homes, your neighborhoods, uh, City of Berkshire all the way through to K. Move those three, the Waller County area going into Harris County and Fort Peck County territories. And so this gives you kind of an idea of where the district is, our boundary, as well as where our major creeks are. And I'll come into more detail to explain, you know, where those, how those creeks come into play, where we're seeing challenges today and how we have a plan in action to improve those easements, improve those channels, things that we maintain on a daily basis to protect the public, protect these surveys. And I mentioned easement, I keep mentioning easement. So what is an easement? I want to provide an official here to explain that, to capture that again, to differentiate between your typical ditching you see in front of your house versus a larger channel. And I'll have pictures showed on the next screen. Um, but easement essentially is covering a, you know, piece of area within the property that allows us access to maintain our drainage infrastructure appropriately. So that gives us the right, you'll see it on any different type of property, whether it's a subdivision or it's an undeveloped area, where we have a right to have to go in and access our easement, our channel, to maintain it, improve it, and to operate it. Again, to make sure that it's serving your needs and strictly for drainage purposes. So a little bit of picture wise of what we're looking at and what we do. Again, you can see these are pretty large areas of channel, conveying a lot of flow that will come through these areas specifically. Uh, these are all close by. Um, so one of the channels or the picture here to the right, um, that's not far, that's in the Toner Creek area. And then further here to the left, that's further down in the district located close to FM three fifty-nine to the south side of the district. Um, but that's the type of channels we maintain. Uh, we have tractors, we have a great field crew, field staff, about, I think, seven, seven or eight guys uh, that are maintaining our easements on a daily basis. And there's a lot of them. Um, Jackie mentioned on the previous slide. But upwards of seventy miles of drainage, it's a lot. Um, if you want to give a comparison, just, uh, you know, what we do and the scale. I mean, if you think of us, you know, some neighbors, if you have Harris County, there's a Harris County flood control district. Fort Peck County is a Fort Peck County drainage district. And so that's the Berkshire Drenish District. We're serving those areas from Berkshire to Katie, the large scale drainage channel projects. But then we want to go forward from that. We have these channels today, but we have to have more channels. We have to have bigger channels. And we have to have regional potential facilities, which means that I'll get to in a bit. So one of our challenges, why are we here today? Why are we here to present to you? Why do we have propositions on the upcoming November election? It's because we have obstacles, roadblocks that are hitting. We got, as Jackie mentioned, developments coming. Um, but that doesn't stop there. Uh, five and five, same years ago, district looked a lot different. You didn't have as much development, you know, through the district. Going back twenty, thirty, forty years ago was the old Katie period. Mostly rice farms, right? You wanted the water to sit on your property. You wanted the water to save it. Now we want the water to move. We want the water to get out. And so that's what we're up against. And so one of our, one of our main things is the capacity of those channels. And so what we're looking at is we're looking to see how big, how wide those channels are and where they're going. Of making sure they're not going and connecting to different areas of the town that the water wasn't supposed to get there before. So right here, this might look familiar to some of you in the room. Uh, this is by Newman and Stoll McRoe. Uh, it's one of our longest channels, it's one of our longest channels. Uh, it's a pretty, pretty deep channel. And in the dry conditions, it looks like that. And when you get pretty sizable rain event, that channel is filled up. And it gets about ten feet deep. And it's kind of the seep is fine, closest to Berkshire Creek, uh, where it's going under ninety. And then you can see from bank to bank, it's filling. And so when we're looking at this, we're looking at these projects, we're looking at these areas, we're hearing you. So we're, we're, our office, the Berkshire Drenish District office, is in City of Berkshire. So we see these problems, we see these areas during major rain events, we know where the problems are, and we're trying to do our best to be proactive with that. Before the development hits here, go answer your concerns, get your feedback, and come up with a plan, come up with a roadmap to where we can start funding these projects and start making positive, positive progress into that. And then what are we up against? So money. Money is root of volume, correct? Uh, so essentially, we need to have the money, we need to have the resources to make those improvements today. Because we don't want to wait, we don't want to defer the maintenance of the firm, the big projects to help protect the communities. Um, as you know, people are going to keep coming. They're going to keep coming, keep coming. And our infrastructure needs to also improve with those developments that are coming. And so, and we know, again, this is just kind of giving you a reference of the storm events. Last two major storm events that we've had just in this area. I mean, there's been many, many of significant rain events, hurricanes, with Tax State, Hurton, and Harvey. And you can see in Tax State, twenty-three inches over fourteen and a half hours in the Waller County area. It's a significant amount of rain. Uh, Harvey, thirty-four inches before the four days. So our plan, we've mentioned the challenges, mentioned roadblocks, the funding, uh, where we are, what we do, how we want to protect the community, how we want to continue this positive momentum and serving your needs and reducing flood risk throughout the community, right? So the premises, the primary plan here, just to show you, you know, what we're looking to achieve today, but also going forward, is the district has already been proactive in trying to set this up, this, this giant motion. Um, over the last two years, uh, we've been working on a massive drainage plan. And that massive drainage plan consists of a lot of engineering, a lot of fancy modeling, uh, to see where the water's going today. And why is that important? It's because we want to make sure water that, you know, is coming through particular areas within the Berkshire area, the Katie area, is not going where it's not supposed to. Uh, and so, looking at our easements, looking at our channels, looking at the different, what we call water sheds, uh, that's all very important in understanding the flow of water, how, the passing we need for our channels, and even potential for regional potential facilities. So I'm going to get to the bond here in just a second. But again, I want to expand on kind of what the watershed aspect is. And I'll have the exhibit on the next slide to show you what that watershed is. But watershed essentially, if you think about it, water, when rainfall comes and it hits on the top side of the district, maybe by five twenty-nine, let's say, for example, that water gets somewhere, that water goes somewhere, goes south, right? Gravity, goes south. That water, some of that, depending on what watershed you're in, a watershed is that area of land, a channel's out of water to a common outlet. Those common outlets are those main creeks that I was mentioning on the previous slides. The creeks that we are responsible for maintaining, the creeks that are responsible for taking that storm water away from your homes and away from your communities. So Berkshire Creek being one of them, runs through the majority of your, of City of Berkshire, being east, splitting to east fork and west fork of Berkshire Creek. Uh, Counter Creek, the west side, and as well as Bessie Creek from the west. But it doesn't stop there. The district goes at everything from a thirty thousand foot level. We're not isolated to a community, we're not isolated to a neighborhood. We look at all forty-nine thousand acres, all seventy miles of channels. So expanding to east, we're looking at Whole Fork, Snake Creek, and Keanhawn Bridge. And so with that, with that, with those, with those watersheds, with that understanding of all the different areas that, you know, need to be looked at from flood resilience. Uh, what kind of improvements, what kind of projects can we look at? Channel projects, regional attention, those channels, those easements that I was mentioning. If you're having just a maintenance, maintenance related activity, you know, over time, storms come and come and come. What do they bring? Trash, debris, silt, accumulates at the bottom of the channel, right? That takes a lot of money, takes a lot of effort to, to, to silt those channels, uh, to clear out that trash, clear out the debris after major storm events. Uh, but then you also talk about the capacity I mentioned in the previous slide. Want to expand the channel, deepen the channel, widen the channel. And so all that, so those channel improvements, I would look at each of those different watersheds. Berkshire Creek, Counter Creek, Bessie Creek, and so forth. And then even more important, regional attention. Attention is important, why? When those channels hit a certain capacity, so let's mention the Newman one for an example, the one that I've mentioned in the previous slide. That Newman Road channel conveys a lot of water, but it hits a capacity at some point, depending on a given rain event, right? When it over tops, where it overflows, where does it go? Today, it goes into underdocked property to the east, or potentially fills up the streets and eventually makes its way to people's homes and into the surrounding communities. Regional attention basins are very critical. You'll see them all throughout, you know, in the Harris County area. Extremely critical for have an overflow point for those channels to accumulate, for that water to be. When that channel over tops, that water will now have a large, it's a large tub, if you will, a large volume of space that that water is coming in to collect. And that water, you can assume that this is the subdivision, this is the Newman channel, Newman Road channel. Uh, that water will over top that channel, be coming to this attention basin to collect, and it's hauled back before getting to your houses and to your communities. And so that's extremely important when you're looking at major rain events, stream event conditions, to provide more resiliency, more, uh, more infrastructure improvements in the surrounding area to, you know, promote drainage, promote public safety. So expand on this. I know this is going to look like a pretty crazy exhibit to the right. Uh, to kind of expand, I'll be, be slow if you have questions. If you want me to stop on this or anything, you can come back to it. I'm happy to do that. So what this is showing to you, this is kind of showing our roadmap. I mentioned our roadmap with our capital improvement plan, our massive drainage plan that's in the works, working on for two years, coming up with a capital improvement plan. That capital improvement plan is essentially a roadmap, a project we want to be reaching every year to expand our easements, improve our channels, and look at potential areas for regional attention. Attention where you could have that water accumulate, to not get into your yards, not get into your streets, but to have it to collect into large volume, uh, volumetric spaces. And so what we're seeing here, it's kind of hard being able to see it from where you're sitting, but these different colors here, I was mentioning on the previous slide, the watersheds. So, you know, just for example, showing the Berkshire area here. You can see there's multiple watersheds involved. You have the Berkshire Creek watershed, which is split, which is split between the east fork and the west fork of Berkshire Creek. You got Counter Creek, oh, thank you. Uh, you got Counter Creek. And then you have Bessie Creek. So what I mentioned earlier, without the visual, this kind of helps portray now. You don't want water from Bell Bottom Creek getting into Bessie Creek. No water coming from here to now flowing to here. Because why? Water here, eventually, if it gets into Berkshire Creek, will eventually go into, to, you know, downtown Berkshire. So we're looking at a massive drainage, but we want the water to follow the same path that it does today, the same natural sheet纹 patterns today. And so what we're seeing here on these, uh, on these individual lines that you see, so don't, don't pay attention just yet to the yellow and to the triangles. We're looking at these purple lines. Those are easements that the district has been accumulating ever since its creation in nineteen sixty. Okay? And so those easements are some of the things that we maintain today, but also that we want to expand. Those are the easements that we don't have the capacity that we want to do today to meet the goals, to meet the needs of the community. And so with these purple, I guess darker purple lines, the hole lines, those are easements that we want to obtain, the future easements, proposed easements. So when developments come in, where, if we have the acquisition of the land of that easement to come in, we can now start building channels, more channels, again, to move that water out. And you can see here, just a clear example, Snake Creek. Water from the top, all the way from five twenty-nine, travel all the way down to the southeast before it hits Snake Creek, closer to, closer to City of Katie area. And so that's just to give you an example of how we want to route that water. We don't want water to get from, uh, from the, of one watershed and move to the other. And then going into the improvements, going into the bond projects, going into the capital improvement projects, things that we want to do today with the bond funds, but also continue on with the capital improvement. Capital improvement plan, what I keep mentioning, is an ever evolving plan. It's a literally written document, as I would say. We hear your feedback, we get your feedback if you see things in the community, areas that need, you know, to be, to be of prime importance to, to, you know, tackle for that particular year. Uh, it's something that we want to include in our capital improvement. Talk with our board, talk with our staff. So these yellow areas, those are areas that we're looking at channel improvements. So on the previous slide, I showed the different types of improvements, whether it's major flooding, de-silted, clearing, uh, you know, fixing side slopes that have washed out and, you know, given rain event, in storm event. And also widening, we can include widening, channel, channel purpose, widening, deepening, providing some more capacity. The triangles, the green triangles, those are areas we're looking at for regional potential. Again, these are target areas. Primary nature, because we want to hear your concerns, but we also want to make, uh, make, make sure that we're addressing those concerns. Make sure we're looking at appropriate areas that we think would best serve the community. So when we're looking at starting these projects, getting, getting the bond proceeds and starting these projects, we're going to look at the feasibility, the land acquisition, the benefits, the immediate benefits of the community. That's the most important thing. What projects, in what order, prioritization of that, will provide the most benefits to the community? So that includes, City of Berkshire includes, you know, areas within the community like Berkshire Gardens. We're looking at those areas, we're hearing your concerns. And to kind of wrap things up from the engineering, technical side of things, the capital improvement plan, what does that look like from terms of our budget, in terms of the costs that we're looking at? So our budget, the blue, showing what our budget is today, you know, through our, our current fiscal year and continuing projecting out forward. So orange is essentially those projects that I mentioned, high scale, very expensive projects. Channel improvements is the regional extension. You can see the blue is not meeting the orange, just don't have the resources to be able to fund those projects.
And here's where I take over again. So, uh, when I visited with the mayor, one of the first things that he asked me is, he said, "My voters are going to want to know exactly what this means today. You heard what BKBD does, you heard what the district represents, you heard what our plan represents." Mayor, before I answer that question directly, this particular slide addresses what district-wide homes look like. So this is the entire Berkshire Drenish District. And so what we do is we look at the average home state value, which is approximately four hundred and sixty thousand one ninety-four for the entire district line. We're going to use that as our template, right? And so if we use that as our template, then the value that we're looking at, that will be an investment for our, our capital improvements and for our projects, will be less than a cup of coffee per day. Those are the kind of numbers that the mayor said that he would want to know. That is for the entire district, which is at four hundred and forty-three dollars per year, okay? Next slide, please. It gets even better for the City of Berkshire. And this is a slide that we made specifically based on the comments that the mayor had. The mayor said, "I want to know exactly what this means for my residents." And this is what it means for your residents, sir. So you have an average home state value in the City of Berkshire, around two hundred thousand, a little bit over two hundred thousand, two hundred and two to be exact. And the adjustment that we would be looking at would be one hundred and eighty-seven dollars per year. That's less than a postage stamp per day. And this, these are the numbers that the mayor wanted to see. He wanted to know if we're looking at improvements, if we're looking at investments, exactly what it would be for his residents. And so we went, we did that research, sir, and we made sure that we brought it to the council members and to your voters, to make sure that everyone is fully informed. Next. And so, I appreciate the time, Mayor, council members, all of the voters, everyone who's here today, to allow us to present to you, again, these propositions will be on your ballot November fourth. Uh, early voting starts October twentieth, just around the border. And it ends on October thirty-first. Election Day is on Tuesday, November fourth. Again, there will be three propositions, A, B, and C, all covering these improvements that we've discussed tonight. And again, my name is Jackie Bailey. I represent the PAC of BKBD. And I'm asking you to please vote for and support propositions A, B, and C. Thank you so much for having us, this is, we really appreciate you.
So, you know, I, uh, when I first, uh, seen the new BKBD building, I was, I have to apologize for the bad words that I was saying at the time. And here is all this time, I find out that you all, because working on a plan in the background, that forecasting and planning is bringing good opportunities for residents to make sure that they're not flooded. And so this is very, very well, well overdue, we need. You know, citizens, they gave the school a raise. They gave the water district a raise. And you all haven't had a raise in, I don't know, I don't. And so if we can't, we can do all we can and do everything, but if we flood, it will be all for nothing, right? So I think this, that this is well, well overdue. When we begin with the presentation, I wanted to ask, where are the regional, regional potential funds? For specific areas? And then I saw it. I grew up over there in Berkshire Gardens. My mom played three times. I know, I know the need, but I'm concerned where that triangle is. I see where you, you're going to improve the drainage from three sixty-two to Newman Road. And I'm, I'm assuming you, you're planning on actually that extra water potential. But what about the residents in, uh, in here?
The current, current area of that triangle, at least the, the depression area, is currently undeveloped, from the east side. Um, where the traction we're looking at would not have been all in the, it would be all in flood.
And that means, right, right at MacDowell's the road?
So what do we want?
You know, the.
And that's where your concerns, David, that, like, you have a particular one you want to talk to you or where you have to picture?
Yeah, because I think the residents in Berkshire Gardens, they're going to want to know where they are. Because of, of, they have, they probably, the rest of the residents in, in the community. Uh, I do know that some things, that should be top priority.
So we're looking to do things now to improve conditions there. And obviously, you can't solve every problem today, but we want to try to fill, fill new blocks together to make that problem change. Thank you so much.
And I do want to say that the mayor and city secretary have all my contact information. So if you have any additional questions, please do not hesitate to reach out. We're here to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We will, consulting reports, communication report.
Thank you, sir.
What was that, ma'am? Is that a public announcement? I couldn't hear.
There is, uh, on the phone enforcement report, the enforcement representative is not present today.
Oh.
So if anyone has any questions on the report, we'll be on the answer table now. Any discussion on phone enforcement report? And next, we have the grant works reports and grant funding reports. Good evening.
Hello. So we are moving right along with the upper roof project. I believe, um, the NTP will be issued on Monday, October sixth. Uh, he has written a letter, um, and I think he will be sending those out at the end of this week. And we should be in charge of schedule, but in this week and Monday, at the latest, so that we can. And we should be in charge of schedule, but in this week and by Monday, if the latest, so that we can start posting that online as well. As the residents turn out and work, um, and we also updated the map, so that I can watch that online, like show me.
So, and NTP is known to proceed. And so this is the road, road work of the Upper Project. For major patchwork that's going to begin on Monday? Monday. So residents should see crews working under their homes on those specific streets, starting on Monday.
Sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that? I couldn't, we couldn't hear about Monday and our homes.
So, the Upper Road Project is a project that requires a major road repair patchwork on about nine different roads throughout the city. And that project will begin on Monday. The contractors will start work on Monday. But notices that have already been sent out to the residents to let them know where to park and not park while the work is being going on. And I think it's not going to be long, I think it's a quick job, right?
Yeah.
Each street should be a day's work. Okay? All right, uh, you know, J A Engineer, Public Works Report?
Um, so permits, we've gotten quite a few in. We've sent out a couple of, you know, objection letters and a couple of review letters so far. Um, I think there's a couple of variances that we are doing tonight, and then there's a lot that we did on Monday.
I do have a question about three, two, seven, seven, seven.
Sure.
Um, I know this has been ongoing for a minute, and, um, I know that the, the residents for that particular address had met all of the requirements, um, and once they met the requirements, some, some bills came up, which was they needed, uh, just a manufacturing home, probably, for me, they need a seal by engineer, which comes down the line, which can explain that.
So they are in the floodway. And when you're in floodway and you're doing a manufacturing home, a modular home, the structural foundation needs to be sealed by an engineer. Typically, the manufacturer that is manufacturing those ones already has a sealed structural plan. Like she, she shouldn't have to get separate ones for her house. It's usually, they usually come with plans.
Okay, so you say you get, they don't, they don't have a deal. They don't give that information. And I don't understand why I have to give that.
Hold on one second. So, ma'am, are you the person that has, could you come up, please? If it's Kobeon, could you please come up?
I understand you're looking to build up the building, and actually all the privacy that you have. Everything that has been required. I've got an elevation, but nowhere does it say that I need to get it sealed by an engineer because I'm in the floodplain. I got the elevation certificate like you requested. But now you're accessing more and more, and I just don't understand.
The comment was there, the person you were there.
But where is that stated under Brookshire guidelines that I need that? I've given everything that you've asked for.
So, and we apologize for the confusion, okay? Uh, we found out that maybe in the past, when houses were moved in or, or built in the floodplain, things may have not been done right, okay? But we want to do them right, to protect you and also protect the city. And also protect you with your blood insurance or whatever is required with your home. You are required in a one-hundred-year floodplain to have engineering drawings to make sure that your house is properly anchored down, so that when a flood or if a flood do occur, that your house will not float away. And so, and, and that's why we, we made council aware and know that moving forward, anyone that chooses to move houses, build it under your floodplain will require engineer plans to fall. So you got caught up in a discovery and learning thing for the city, okay? But we're going to work our way through it. And I think we've worked with you for quite a while, and I know you're frustrated, right? And so, and so, uh, we want to get a commitment from LJA that you all will make sure that you all be a priority.
Sure. But isn't that what I should have to pay for something that drove changing? I get everything according to the guidelines.
The engineering, unfortunately, the engineering plans for your home is a requirement.
I have a plan, but they're just not sealed.
Yeah, so if they're not stamped, they have to be stamped by a certified engineer, okay? And that's where it does become a little bit expensive to get that type of work done. Uh, so that's one thing you're like, that you, you do need to get, is plans for certified, certified engineer. And I think is that the only hope for...
The issue is that she's purchased this home and she doesn't have the extra money to get an engineer, so she's still stuck. And she, she might have the confidence to go, you know, that's something she should do. I need to ask you again.
Yes, well, uh, we will, you know, this is without the, uh, atmosphere to go further into the conversation, but I did want to give an opportunity, a couple of words to speak. This Kobeon's been intimately involved, Dr. Tis has been, you know, involved in this project, and I have to, we spent numerous hours on it. And so, we'll get it worked out. We're going to work it out, and you'll be able to get your house moved there.
Thank you.
For this to, yeah, man. And, any more comments for...
Do I need to just have your cell street, uh, or your cell block?
Okay, so the cell street, uh, Chris, yeah. And the motion to, to go three, five.
I would like to introduce to the council reports for public enforcement, rent docs, and county attorney's unit comments report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Department of Health, Audit Reports, Public Works, Dr. Tis, good evening.
Ladies, Mayor, Council, and residents and tenants, if I reported in front of you again any questions, I am impressed, and I do have a six and a half minute video I need to share. But I think we've been doing much better.
Hello and good evening, Mayor, and council, staff, and residents and tenants. Tonight we'll be providing you with some updates regarding the culvert cleaning and ditch reshaping that we have accomplished over the last month.
So there was no ditch here. We, uh, cleaned out these culverts all the way around, coming down Depot there, and then all the way down Franklin, we started there, created that ditch along there. There was water running through there, dried out, so seems to be working. There's culverts starting here, all along this driveway here. We jetted that entire culvert out, and it's cleared down as well. As you can see there, dirt outside of that. But we just re, uh, just desilting, just like BKDD was talking about. Our main objective here was getting the culverts clean. As you can see, you can see straight through these culverts now. This is Franklin Street, we did all of Franklin on both sides, and then, um, what you'll see next, uh, coming up in about five seconds or so, is starting up on Auto. And if you come down Auto, right past the, uh, the metal shop there, we started here, we, we jetted out these culverts as well. Again, desilting these, uh, these, uh, these, these drains, drain adjustments, just like BKDD was talking about. Our adjustments aren't as, and ditches aren't as big as theirs, but what you can see now is water will flow through these culverts, uh, freely. They, um, where, some of them are twenty-five percent full, fifty percent full, seventy-five percent full, and a hundred percent full, as you all saw last month when we discovered some of them. So as you can see, uh, there's actually a detention on the needs to be cut right there to the left. To the left, you'll see a, a culvert coming out from there. So all the way down both stri, both, uh, street, these streets, both sides, all the way down to Bostick Park, you'll see they're completely clean. We've done a little bit of extra work on Cooper Street that I didn't put on here, but if you are, um, able to drive the street to it, you'll see these culverts being cleaned. Um, if the public works crew is, is in your way, just give us a couple, a minute or thirty seconds extra, you know, if you can just kind of provide us a, um, a little bit, we're, we're trying to be safe there, but you know, sometimes we might not see the residents going by, so if you can just be on the lookout for us. Right here is a BKDD ditch, that hell, that was full. So what we did, we, we created that ditch, and, and now you see it's dry because we were able to jet all the culverts from there. And, um, now you see Depot coming, uh, at Sonic. We widened this ditch just a little bit, didn't necessarily widen, but we created that ditch there, took all the, uh, silt, and now, um, there's actually an actual ditch. So here in the downtown area, what we did was we cleaned the storm drains out. And so what you'll see is we're going into this manhole right here. And, um, that right there, what you'll see is a bunch of leaves, mud, everything gathered up. And so what that right there, that entrance is about six feet down before it goes under the road. So that was completely packed, about five and a half feet. So what they're doing now is, is vacuuming all that out. And so, um, what is right in front of them is, is a, is a drain. So for the streets to drain, they're draining right into that. And so with all that being packed, they, they were not able to drain. So, um, the street was completely full going into their yards and, um, not close to the home, but being pretty close there. So providing enough, some more drainage relief for the residents in this area. What we did here is, uh, take a video and see what they're doing there. As you can see, there's some great suction. We pulled it all the way up, we pulled everything up all the way six feet down. Then they went to the other side here, and you'll see a little bit further, they came this other side on Cooper. And, um, what they're doing here next in, in the video, is they're going to jet from this side. So they're sending water from this side to the other side to completely clear it out as they, as they, uh, bring that line back. So water flows freely from this place all the way outside of the downtown area, all the way crossing over onto South Street. And so we also went into Briarbrook subdivision, so, my understanding Briarbrook, um, has floods heavily. And so we wanted to provide some relief to the residents there. As you can see, the trash is full there and the drainage is... And so again, they vacuumed all this out. And so providing some more relief so the water can flow freely there. Um, you'll notice that there's a lot of garbage in there as well, so we took all that out. Next, they will go to the manhole and vacuum that out as well. You'll no, you'll notice, you'll start to notice that once they vacuum the, the manhole out on this next video, that the water's going to start draining from across the street, providing that relief. So that added provenance as well. So, this machine here, we, uh, a different company brought them out to see, um, see what they were able to, to help us with. And Briarbrook subdivision, some of these, um, manholes, uh, downtown area had roots going through them, so next time they're going to have to bring a different, uh, type of jetter. But as you can see, we'll, uh, as you zoom in, the water's coming from underneath the road, from across the street, and finally, um, trying to drain, but we found an issue in Briarbrook. There's a major issue in Briarbrook, um, with drainage and the outfall on the outside of the utility adjustment that we were informed about. Here, the guys are shooting a little bit of, uh, they're shooting for the gray there determined. We've determined that there is no gray there behind Briarbrook, so we're allowing us to share a little bit of what we've done throughout the community. I want to publicly thank all the public work staff here today, road and drainage, parts of gray, fleet maintenance, and building maintenance. Thank you all for all the work that you do for this community. Just wanted to provide, like, that to you all, just to highlight some of the things that the staff has done, and, uh, on behalf of the entire public works department, we, we thank you.
It's been some work, and you know, uh, we have to start with the low-hanging fruit. And Eddie is cleaning out the drains and the ditches to, uh, start with the plant. If the culvert's the call, and the dirt is this way, it's going to hit the drains, so that's the work.
Yeah.
Mayor, council, for the month of September, I had interviews, um, I had, uh, part of a board for one interview for the executive assistant for the PD, Joe Sedet, but we had two hires, which was the chief of police and the executive assistant at the PD. I had one paper for the drug training test, and we had one question too, is on documents signed and executed in force for the ordinance for the tax rate adoption, ordinance for the budget adoption, ordinance for the tax out speed limit. My main focus for the previous month was, we sent paperwork over to the taxes of the collector to begin the tax roll. We should be having our tax bills rolled out, near October. I spoke with them again on today, uh, assessment of Southwest has been very far off, which is, and helping this county over at the Walert County office. So it's a serious transition, but to let the citizens to know, this period, this month, this transition period, anybody that has received paperwork for law merger for tax collection, delinquent taxes, they can come over to our office and bring us a check or money order, but it will not be processed until October because it's in the middle of Walert County taking over. We will take it, we will hold it, but it'll be a money order or a check. And mid-October, it'll be processed through the Walert County Tax Assessment Office. But it's only delinquent taxes, that's what everybody, um, it's like four or five dollars and stuff like that. Not a whole lot of money and funds being here. Um, sent paperwork over to Becky at Walert County appraisal district to turn in for the twenty twenty-five tax rate levy. I'm still waiting on from Joseph, the junk vehicle ordinance, we're working on that. Um, we're waiting on, in a local agreement between Brookshire and Justice for Water District. Uh, I spoke with the attorney over there, he said that he has it, uh, ready to go to send over to our attorney. So the two attorneys are going to collaborate, make sure everything's good before we present it to both boards. And currently, um, me and Joseph are working on reviewing the dictation request to a forty. Uh, he has sent it over to me, and at this moment, we just have to review it and go over it and talk, and see how we're going to go about charging fees and such. So we're working with, he has completed that part.
What was that again, this secretary? With Joseph Hayes? Joseph from Olson and Olson, what, what are y'all doing together?
We're working on several things, ordinance, junk vehicle ordinance, and dictation request of ordinance.
And the fees for, is there something you said about fees?
Yes, ma'am. There was fees for, um, requesting open records request.
So, I don't know if I'm allowed to say, but please fulfill them first, before you start charging us for, for them. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. City Hall, AMB, every Tuesday morning at eight oh seven, eight AM. That's all, if you have any questions there.
Good evening, council. Before I start with my report this evening, I want to introduce everybody to our newest police officer that we swore in, um... Before I start with my report this evening, I want to introduce everybody to our newest police officer that we saw in, um, this past Monday. So Officer Phillips. Officer Phillips is our newest officer. He's worked here previously for the city of Brookshire. Uh, he just came to us from Royal ISD, and he's had over ten years of experience. And he is our community relations officer. He has introduced me to more people than I can count. In the five days that he's been here, four days that he's been here. But he's a great addition to our team, and I'm really excited to have him on board. For the month of September, the total calls per service is two hundred and forty-nine. And we assisted outside agencies with, uh, thirty different phone, or thirty different calls per service. And our officers responded to twenty traffic accidents, all of those accidents being non-injury accidents. Uh, our office had two hundred and sixty-nine traffic contacts. And we had forty-five offense reports this month. Uh, our officers issued five criminal trespass warnings this month, and we had fifty-five vacation watches. There were a total of eleven arrests made by the PD for the month of September. Um, I personally interviewed four, uh, different candidates, uh, for police officer jobs, uh, in the past two weeks that I've been here. Um, an offer letter was given to Officer Phillips, and he started this week. Um, we had one resignation by police captain. And myself, along with other officers, have, uh, attended five, done five different community events this month. You have any questions this morning?
Any questions for this department?
I wish I had one community I did see the whole year, the hand gear, the food drive, and another.
Yes, ma'am.
Another piece of connection possible.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
We have Mayor Council. So for the municipal court, for September, the report, um, cases been filed from the police department, we had a hundred and twenty-nine cases. Completed cases were fifty-three. Total revenue collected for the month of September was twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents. Number of people on the docket were twenty-nine. Um, we had one non-vantage trial this month, so we put a little bit less on the docket because we get that person's time to be able to hear their case and everything. So we had that, um, show call socket, we had thirty-two. Dismissed those compliances with fee, registration, driver's license, fiduciary disposition, and driver's safety cards, we had ten. Dismissed by prosecution, total of three. Um, dismissed other insurance compliance and fee bargain, one. Laws that were issued for the month of September were fifty-eight, reported to Omni were fifty-seven, and also required to collect them were fifty-seven. So the summary is the total collections for the month of September were twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents. An increase of two thousand, six, six hundred and six dollars and ninety cents over the previous month of August. The combination of docket still noting three cases for the month of September, an increase from August of ten cases. There were a hundred and twenty-nine file violations in the month of September, an increase of eighty-four file, file violations from the month of August. Any questions?
Thank you.
Financial report to be of.
You should not go to the board.
This one.
Hello, council. For the month of August, the city, um, had an income of sixty-three K, expenses of seven, uh, seven hundred and, I'm sorry, six hundred and thirty-nine K for income. Seven hundred and twenty-one K for expenses, so we kind of expended more than our income this month. Um, we also did six thousand for credit cards this month, and fifty-four payments as well. I have an audit update for FY twenty-two, the fixed audit. The fixed assets were completed and sent to the auditors, and so now they're ready to review that. Uh, we are in the process of closing, uh, twelve out of sixteen of the Wells Fargo accounts. Both the auditor and the accountant felt comfortable enough that we had enough data to start closing those accounts, so. And, um, I believe that's it, yeah. We also have a healthy relationship with Wells Fargo right now, so if you do need anything, they're more than assured of that they will provide the data that we do need.
Any questions? I don't understand. Discussion pass back with approved city attorney to create. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't understand, it would be favorable, uh, attorney, uh, Mr. Olson is my president. He's going to do a presentation on this particular item at the October sixteenth, council meeting. I don't know, a discussion pass back to approve LJ to provide more details for future projects. And this one was added by, uh, Alden Stamps. Uh, I could say that, that, kind of coming on a little bit. We are trying to, uh, improve our relationship with LJ. There's no, uh, negativism to you. This is, uh, a comment to your company, okay? Is that we want better participation. We've asked for a weekly meeting, we've not gotten that yet. We have several projects that are, that are in process, that are being slowly done. Uh, we, our clients are getting frustrated. And when things do not happen, the, the people don't see you, they see the city of Brookshire. And so we don't, we do not want a bad reputation for new developers that are trying to come to our town. We want to make the process for development easy. And I know there are rules and guidelines that we must follow within the law, and we want to do that. But we need better cooperation from your company. We're in the midst of many projects with you all, and none of our payments have been linked to you all. They're on time, and they're, they're expensive. So we, we want, we want better cooperation, uh, so we can move some of these projects along. If you can carry that message back to the company, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
I would like to add to that, and, um, also, when you come and present a plan or something like that, we would like more information. I know at our last meeting, you presented a couple of them, but you didn't know anything about them, or?
They hadn't told us yet. So they don't always, when they do the class, they don't always give us a plan immediately. Like, sometimes they just surprise them, or, or presentations, or that was. Those particular ones, they hadn't finalized what they were going to put on there.
In the future, in the future, are they able to actually come as well, and that's something?
We can have as a regard.
Mayor, may I say that everything you just said, that to, you know, someone who works for the city, myself, as a citizen, and other people like me can say that for you all. For public information requests, city services, so I think please understand there's a systemic problem here in our city. It's not, it's not anything else, it's the whole system. And just because some things are A-plus, doesn't mean we figured it out. So anything you just said to this engineering company, you just need to look in front of the mirror, and that's coming from us citizens to all of y'all.
Thank you. I don't know, nine. Discussion pass back to grant, sign various, quick trip.
Okay, okay.
Quick trip, too. Okay, all right.
You have to be mayor of council members and representative of Brookshire. Uh, my name is Harrison Ballman. I am the real estate project manager for a quick trip here in Houston and greater surrounding areas. Um, we just wanted to take a couple minutes, literally a couple minutes, just to explain who we are as future members of the art community. And, and then just quickly go through the sign variants a bit, I think we're already all familiar with this super quick. I'm good, I can see it fine, okay. Uh, QuickTrip, uh, is more than a gas station. Uh, since nineteen fifty-eight, we've been employee-owned and operated. And our, our whole thing is just build, maintain, and operate our stores. No franchises, we keep complete quality control over all of our stores. Um, it's all us as employees, um, as owners. Uh, our core values are just here real quick, we don't have to go into detail there. Um, our biggest one is just doing the right thing. So that comes from our workings with the city, uh, which y'all have been fantastic so far. Uh, from our site design with safety in mind especially, um, that's creating the hit group of traffic, as well as personal safety of our, uh, of our people who shop in our store. Just a few quick traps, uh, quick facts about QuickTrip. Um, here, we have been on Fortune, uh, sixteen years on the Fortune's list of a hundred best companies to work for. Um, here, you can see a good overview of our, store manager's salary is ninety thousand up to a hundred thousand per year, uh, nineteen, just starting out fresh. Um, our two favorite ones that we like to talk about though is QuickTrip contributes five percent of all of our profits to charitable organizations in the local communities with, with all our partners. We don't take five percent of our profits and give it to a national organization that spreads that out. It comes directly here from the people that we're hiring from your community that work in our stores and become part of our family. We're really proud of that. Um, another one too is if anybody's surrender with a national safe place location, we do have that designation. Uh, which means if anybody is in trouble, youth, and, um, in any sort of domestic violence situation, what have you, we are designated as a safe place. If they can come and seek refuge until they get the help, we're responsible for them. Another thing we are particularly proud of too is we do have great food. And we thought it is, it's made to order and about the same time that you can fill up your car, so you can grab a go, help go along, uh, about your day. This is just a general overview and a rendering of what the front of our store is gonna look like. Um, here's the next one. We have renderings made of what this particular sign is gonna look like. Uh, you can see our main building there, uh, with our large auto canopy for normal cars. And then in the back, of course, all of our trucks are gonna be coming to fill up. We have two full accesses, one on I-ten and one on fourteen eighty-nine. This is just an example of one of the signs that we're gonna, uh, be needing variants for. It's just really just guide trucks towards our scales that we have on the side, so they're not having to back up and realigning with truck traffic is a little bit heavier. This is our, uh, truck canopy, um, and it what's, how that looks, uh, as it compares to our site, which is west. Uh, another one is you're pulling into our site, uh, coming off of I-ten, this is what we'll see. And then this is just a general overview of our site plan that we have right now, and this is what we're planning on doing. Um, so with that in mind, we'll go to the next. The first sign that we're giving the variants for, I'm just gonna touch on, is one monument sign with a height of twenty-five feet, total area of one-twenty. What's currently allowed is a side of fifteen feet or four feet square feet. Uh, this is just a general rendering of what that monument sign is gonna look like. It's gonna be going on the access over on F and fourteen eighty-nine. The next one is our high-rise sign. Uh, this one's of particular importance to us, being on I-ten. Um, anybody that's had our suite T will tell you that they will merge over five lanes to get to the exit. It just allows them to make that in a safe manner, and it's about possible, and what you see a lot of on forty-five. So, uh, this is of good importance to us, and that's where it's gonna be located there, on the south quest corner. Just to give, uh, a representation of our, uh, canopy signs, we call them buttons, uh, at three locations. We will need a variance for that as well, because they do extend three inches vertically and horizontally above the canopy. We do, we are proud of, um, induced by our site signage, it does allow people to turn into our, uh, in, I guess, locate and turn into our sites a lot sooner than they would if they were a bit smaller. It is important to us. Just what the front of our building looks like. Um, again, typically, what's allowed by code is gonna be a hundred and seventy, uh, square feet an area. Our typical is two hundred and twenty square feet of area. And this is our diesel canopy sign, very similar to the other auto canopy sign. Um, really no difference, just a little bit bigger, but less permitted by code. And then as mentioned before, is our certified truck scale entrance, uh, that allows trucks, you know, to not have to go back up and create a traffic gap in there. Creates a lot of foot traffic safety as well, as you don't have trucks, um, kind of driving around looking for an entrance. Uh, it allows everything to circulation to go very smoothly. And then again, no branding or designation on this, as advertised for QuickTrip. This is strictly for safety in mind, as all of our signs are, but this one's strictly for truck traffic. Located on both of our full accesses, just to allow them to make an informed decision. You can see it's different than the auto, um, access that we have down there, with how it keeps them separate and safe, and allows them to circulate around our site well. And then with that, all in here, any questions y'all have? Okay, buddy? Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. So the entrance for the trucks will, um, it'd be coming from, um, like a feeder row or, or on the main, on fourteen eighty-nine?
Yes, ma'am, we have one for both.
Okay.
And they're probably in the culvert side.
Okay. They travel a little bit earlier than the point, so.
Okay.
It's hard to, not only the T. It's your slang for coffee.
Thank you, uh, for, uh, choosing City of Brookshire, bringing on your locations. And, Dr. Patrice, can you give us an update on the process for, uh, before we, uh, get this project done?
So just beginning to engineer that, so, um, the variants, we've, we've talked about variants, and then, um, had a discussion with, uh, engineering just a moment ago. And there's just some updates that they need to provide to, um, QuickTrip. We didn't want to put a letter out, but with just a quick comment, I think you might be able to adjust. So we can, we can give it them, and then make those adjustments, and then, uh, push forward with the application.
Okay, sir, I have one question. When is your initiative, initiative to, to grant open?
We would probably be fall of twenty-twenty-six.
Fall of twenty, fall of twenty-twenty-six.
And for the next council meeting, uh, we just heard is that apply with, uh, this, we're in there, actually.
Number nine. I make a motion that we, uh, approve to take action to grant this on there, it's for QuickTrip. All in favor? I don't know, ten. Discussion pass back to approve the variant, of, of that, okay, the forty-three-one still wrote. So I ask for this particular item, um, and, uh, I know, uh, LJ has some comments, and would you like, would you like to, to bring those comments?
So the code states that any residential building or the accessory structure over two hundred square foot cannot be cordial metal, um, as the exterior of the building. And this is a carport with three hundred square foot space in the back of it, if they're in the actual building, so that qualifies as not being able to be cordial metal. But he was asking for a variance to, um, have it as the exterior.
So what, what exactly does it have to be, what, what wood primed is needed?
Same, yeah, wood primed, same thing like, can you, do you remember when we had the painting at home? So she had the wood plaid to be able to build in here, like essentially you can put wood on the outside, I was like, yes. Or you could siding, I mean, basically, anything you could siding to that hole.
So I, uh, should go by and look at the location. So I went by and looked at the location, and this particular house sits all back out the street. Uh, this carport comes with a building attached, there's no storage building attached. And from what I see, I did research and I couldn't find one online that was made of wood. So, uh, the residents would have to actually go purchase additional wood to add to the outside. But the reason why I, I thought that it could qualify for bears, because of its location, that is not visible from the street, in the front of the, uh, cor- carport, as a garage door. And so you really can't see the other side of this carport. Uh, but, you know, rules are rules, uh, and, and barriers are there for exceptions. So it's up to the council to decide based on the facts of how you all want to perceive it. So, so if this was made of wood, it would be open.
If he plaid it, it doesn't necessarily have to be made of wood, it can still be made of metal. But it just, the, the final exterior has to be. If he cladded, it doesn't necessarily have to be made of wood. It can still be made of metal, but it just, the, the final exterior has to be something else besides the cord. Cordial metal. He could do the plastic siding, vinyl siding, or wood cladding, similar to what I mentioned, but he did a container home, and she had a wood cladded, and it's just the exterior.
You know, I just thought that owns, I know, yeah, probably would. We have audences that, I believe, do, do another, and I just thought that a carport, you know, probably could be an exception, because I can't, I haven't defined one that was, that was sold with wood on the outside. I make a motion that we try and variance for a carport located at forty-three one Still Road.
Same.
All in favor? Item number eleven, update from LGA engineer about the design process in the twelve streets.
So, we did also pack it, we sent this over. Um, Craig did draw the, uh, the alignment that we're talking about, you know, so that way the right-of-way can be shifted to, to, do you want mine? Yeah, I think as, as y'all are all aware, twelve street has a lot of interest in developing, and the best way to be able to develop a map is to extend, you know, to expand the road to a wider size, so that more traffic can safely and easily go onto it. Um, as far as, as cost, we are still working on that, and I, I think we still have with Romero about meeting with the owner, um, basically of the land below where we would need to get attention or drainage to. And, you know, depending on what they say and what, what they're willing to work with us, it's cheaped the cost a lot. So we are setting up a meeting, hopefully, like we, with the owner, the city, and ourselves, so that we can discuss the drainage options.
What the egg of, of the, of the, how would I have to do that?
So it's across the street from, um, LGA's house. So there, there's, just, again, as she mentioned, there's a lot of interest for twelve street for development. And this is a warehouse that would kinda put you in mind of Empire West, I mean, the warehouse for sort of those types on twelve street. Also, there's other people that wanted to build on twelve street. Some of the challenges are, and I think, Dr. Patrice, you can, you can, you want me to or not. I know that, uh, Germany's, uh, out to it.
So that's, uh, with, uh, Shannon speaking on behalf of his, um, developer, his twinwood, you all are familiar with that, too, um, have, have a meeting with, certainly a lot of twinwood. So all of the developments on the south side of Brooklyn, they own land just outside of, but they have some land in the city limits. But twelve street, south, south of twelve street where this development wants to go, that's where we need a lot of it. We maybe have a discussion with them. If you also notice on the week A D, um, presentation tonight, there's some, there's some twelve street improvements there to the drains as well. So it may be a, a multi-jurisdictional type of, um, public-private partnership that might take place with the developer, uh, bring some of those, uh, costs to, to develop, or, uh, we can at all have these. We have to speak to the private landowners as well. Um, these developers are giving some latitude up on their project, but there are, there's a long way to be up to talk to them, and I want to go over it.
Thank you, too, for staying in the long time, so that's why I'm here.
This is a really, new discussion. Yeah, that's, uh, I can, I can even envision that type of building over there. Well, you know, um, so right now, the discussion is to have, uh, LGA to come to do a study, uh, to let us know, to let the city know, to let the citizens know what is going to be required with this project. Uh, development of the road, some resident, some businesses may have to give up on corners for turns, outfalls, uh, waste, all of that. And so the motion right now is we need to the council approve LGA to move forward with, uh, a study of twelve street project. I don't have a motion. Item number, so your motion is answered, sir?
It's answered.
Do we have a second on that?
Six.
All in favor? Item number twelve, discussion possible after to authorize LGA, I mean, assist financial assistance to lakeside HOA for lakeside outfalls. So lakeside outfalls have been in discussion for quite a while. Uh, there's a problem over there with the detention. I guess this area is owned by the HOA. The HOA is receiving some, some, uh, pushback with the drainage district to get the problem corrected over there. There's three levels of the outfalls, a top level, a second level, and a lower level. The lower level is what are concerned. And so, um, it has been added to the agenda to ask the council to consider a pool of LGA to do a study to finally fix this problem. Uh, we come back with, uh, recommendations and costs. So, did the drainage district just push that on, you guys agree? Yes, the drainage district is, um, consulting with the HOA to get this corrected. They want, they want fixed. So the city, um, think lakeside is part of the city of Brooklyn. And so if we can partner with the HOA in collaboration with the drainage district, to collectively get the problem resolved. And so some of our portion would be to authorize payment to LGA to go out and do the research. Can I just do a presentation? The drainage district, they need some help, and we need some help, too? Well, it's actually, this is actually a, uh, lakeside HOA project. Drainage district, well, because it, because of drainage and flooding and all of those things, the drainage district, drainage district is saying, we need to get this, HOA, we need to get this correct. Correct. Would you like to, hmm, lakeside to the city of Brooklyn?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize LGA engineering to assess financial assistance to lakeside HOA for lakeside outfalls.
Motion passed. Okay, item number thirteen, discussion possible after to approve the city attorney to investigate the removal of the New Mexico pipeline for additional drainage relief from the Broadbrook subdivision. Right now, basically, it's just discussion. I'll talk to, let me just say what this is first. Uh, you all seen the Broadbrook presentation that Dr. Patrice did with the drains? And the easement, the lungs, the ditch, the lungs in the back of Broadbrook. The drains in Broadbrook, there are three culverts that drain to that, to that ditch. Uh, and along that ditch, there's a pipeline that's covered, that has a covey that's going in the, under the bottom of the covered area. The thought was to get that pipeline removed, so that ditch could be free and clear of any obstructions. But in talking to the attorney, uh, he said dealing with the home company is like dealing with the railroad, right? But he will try to reach out to them to see if there's anything that can be done. And so that's where we at right now. There's no motion to actually for discussion. Is there any discussion from council? Is, is it a, a functioning pipeline, or is it? No, the pipeline has not been functioning since twenty-twelve. It's abandoned. But still, the, all company owns the easement. We're hopeful. One more item left here. Uh, item number fourteen, discussion possible after to convert the vacant captain position to the assistant chief position. I asked for this particular item on the, uh, agenda, conversation with Chief Green and with the growth that's coming around in our area. Uh, we have a vacant captain position which can be converted to a assistant chief position, so there's no increasing the count. We had two captains, uh, and one chief. Now we will have a proper training command if, if the council, please the council to approve this particular item. And we will have a chief of police and assistant chief and then captain. So we have a true training command. There's a lot of things that need to be, uh, addressed at the police department. Uh, evidence room needs to be addressed. Uh, jail needs to be reinstated. Our policy manual has been, not been updated since twenty nineteen. Uh, several things that need to be corrected and addressed. And so, um, I think with an assistant chief to a better, if it is, is done in time, then it's likely wise.
Your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make my motion, motion to convert the vacant captain position into an assistant chief position.
Selective session. City council will lead a closed session, District Chapter Five, Chapter five-five-one. Let me quote the purpose of the council, the council, District five-five-one, or seven one. Council would convene a closed session, District Chapter five-five-one, so...